Well, roll call please.
Sure. Director Mike Schaefer.
Here.
Director Art Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Robert Uden.
Here.
President James Veyman. Thank you.
Well, I, um, you know, I'll, I'll give a little background. The, the, the next item is to, uh, uh, re- review the, uh, well, are, are there any public comments? I think we had public comments, uh, when we did the, uh, study session, so.
No comments were received, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, so, uh, the next item is to review and discuss the Sanitary District's, uh, Sewer System Management Plan. And I'll give you a little background, um, in, in two, in, in, in the, in two thousand and two, the waste, the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board implemented, um, in its region, uh, you know, the first round of, uh, what we call the Waste Discharge Requirements. Um, you know, my staff was, uh, was involved in that. Um, and I think something that we ought to add to the SSMP, well, maybe historically, um, noted somewhere was that actually Rob Hamers, the, the district engineer, and I believe the general manager at the time, wrote the first version of the SSMP. And he did that by looking at the, um, some, some of the efforts going on around the country. The SSMP or, or the Waste Discharge Requirements were, were done in an effort to reduce, protect the public health and reduce the sanitary sewer overflows. And there was a large concern in the, uh, professional community at the time that if we didn't get on top of the sanitary sewer overflows or the, you know, the, 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 yeah, the, the, the discharges, um, the, the, um, nationally, they might implement a provision in the nineteen seventy-two Clean Water Act that was a strict prohibition of sanitary sewer overflows. And, and everyone realized that it's, it's probably impossible to have a, have no sanitary sewer overflows throughout the United States. But we wanted to get data for the EPA and the federal government and the state government to, to understand the, um, the potential of, of, uh, a regulation that was going to try to limit and did significantly limit the, uh, the sanitary sewer overflow. You know, I don't, I don't know if that's appropriate to put in our SSMP. Um, but I think it's, it's history that we, we need to somehow, um, recognize and, and write down. And, and probably, you know, with reference to, you know, the, the, the closed session item uh, later on. Uh, anyway, you know, Rob Hamers wrote, wrote the draft and it was implemented. And, uh, then, then the state in, uh, two thousand and five and implemented in two thousand and six did almost exactly the same thing that used the same format and the same, uh, same outline, uh, and, and took the Waste Discharge requirements, you know, that Rob Hamer or that, uh, the sanitary system, the sanitary district, EEC and others had promulgated and put together and implemented back in two thousand and two. Uh, so the sanitary district was, you know, closely and immensely involved and integrally involved in, in, um, the significant Waste Discharge, uh, reductions that we've had regionally first and statewide second. So I'll get off my high horse and we can go on with that.
That's good information. That's real good.
Yeah, Director Schae, uh, who are you? Uden. Director Uden, can I say? Uh, you know, on this one, uh, A six, we have Rob Habers, you know, about him. Maybe we could add that to it because that tells how he took over them, you know, the, uh, the emergency response plan.
Yeah.
And I think it would be great if we could add something like you just said to that part.
Well, his- historically, I think it's important, uh, you know, especially in light of, uh, you know, where we're going with the second item later on.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, so somewhere in there, if, you know, I think we should just look at it and, and we should re- record it for posterity.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Scott, are you gonna leave, are you gonna leave?
I think that's an excellent point, Mr., uh, Acting Chairman. And I remember Rob Hamers used to, uh, lecture other agencies on how to prepare SSMP. In fact, one specifically when, uh, Arlene Schaefer was the president of the CSDA down in Newport Beach, uh, he, he was giving the lecture that day.
Yeah, no, no, Rob, Rob crafted the, crafted almost exactly what we're looking at. So, you know, today, so Scott, are, are you gonna lead this process?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, thank you. I'll, I'll start off just, uh, um, brief, um, uh, recollection of what, what, what occurred since, uh, September eighth, when we first presented the, the draft, uh, to the board. The, the board, um, made a decision to, uh, um, pull this item from the agenda because, um, um, Vice President Uden had a lot of questions. Uh, he wanted, uh, staff to address those questions, uh, before, uh, the plan was discussed. So, um, after we pulled, um, this item, um, direct, uh, Vice President Uden submitted his questions to staff. Uh, and in your staff report is a list of those questions. Uh, we've also, uh, talked on the phone regarding, um, his concerns. Um, so, uh, we need to address all those concerns in, in the document. Um, so you have a list of those questions and answers. Uh, also, uh, we did receive, uh, public comments from the study session, uh, from Mr. Mosier that we addressed as well. And again, that's, that's, uh, incorporated in your staff report of the changes we made. Um, finally, I did want to say that, uh, the Citizens Advisory Committee reviewed the plan on September ninth. Uh, they did not have any comments, um, or suggestions, um, but it was available to the public for, for comments on, on September ninth. So what we're seeking today is for the board's comments, suggestions, um, on, on the plan. Um, and then we'll bring the plan back to you next Monday at your regular board meeting for, um, adoption and recertifications, which by, um, by the regulations, it states that uh, any significant changes in the plan, the board has to recertify it. There has been some significant changes, um, in this plan. Uh, most notably, we, we revised the, um, um, performance measures on how we measures, how we measure, um, um, our activity, um, in maintenance. Um, also, there's been some changes in staffing levels. Um, so, um, there are some, there were some significant changes. What's why we, we believe it warrants, uh, recertification, which has to be approved by resolution, um, next week, uh, if the board, so chooses the direct staff to do that. Um, that's really concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Could I ask you a question, Mr. Chair? Scott, is this the, uh, five-year recertification?
Yes.
And do you happen to know what the legal deadline is for completing and on time?
It just says every five years.
Okay.
Because, um.
Twenty.
I'm sorry?
It's just so in two thousand twenty, it's due. So they didn't have a specific date, I don't believe.
No, no, no specific date. And, and again, if we, if we didn't make any, if we didn't make any significant changes to the document, it does not need to be recertified. Uh, but since it's the last time we made significant changes within two thousand fifteen, and so now we're making another significant change five years later, so therefore it needs to be recertified.
I'm, I'm probably going to suggest that we hold off, uh, another month if we can do that in light of the lawsuit we received. We obviously don't want to, uh, just change the document because of the lawsuit, because that has implications about prevailing party status. But since we received a lawsuit in the last month that has specific challenges to division sees in our SSMP, I think we, uh, will need to talk about that in closed session and then maybe talk about it one more time before it goes on the public agenda for adoption.
Okay.
I had a comment. Um, on A seven, uh, it said, uh, they were correcting that the, uh, engineer estimated, which would be Rob at the time, one point six. And then, of course, it went down in price. Uh, do we have to say all these kind of things in this kind of plan?
No, the, the engineer's estimate for this project, one point six, the bids were open and were opened, um, last week and it came a little over one point six. So that it was, uh, the engineer's estimate was, was, uh, was very accurate, uh, with the low bid. So, uh, we, there's nothing else we have to make changes to, to the, that was just our estimate. So there's no other changes need to be made to the, um, the plan.
Hmm, okay, thank you. On the. Okay, on the, uh, number twelve, on, uh, let's see where is that, on B, discussion items, you have SSMP change, a log. Do we do that just every five years? And what happens if we had to do it in between? Are we allowed to break that five year?
Well, we, we, there's always, there's always revisions to the plan throughout the year. And that's why at the end of the plan, it was called a, a log chart. And so according to the regulations, if we make any change to the plans, let's say, um, a, a change in, uh, responsibilities and implementing the plan, maybe it was, um, uh, uh, the analyst to the engineer, whatever, whatever that change, we would, we can make those changes internally and then log that into the log chart. Um, that does not need a board approval or anything like that because those are minor changes. We can, we can do that. If we have significant changes within the next, within the five years, then we have to recertify it. That's why we're recommending recertification after five years since the last recertification is because of significant changes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Scott, uh, I have a couple of questions. Um, I, in, during, in the emergency power list, uh, you know, some of the pump stations are powered by, um, installed emergency generators and so on and so on. But down at the bottom of the list, it says, you know, the emergency power at the south coast pump station, uh, they have two sources of Edison power and, uh, and an emergency generator. Do, how does, or does our staff work with them? How do we ever check that that emergent, or do they check that that emergency generator will work if it was needed? Or, or, or are we a part of that? Anyway, I think we should just check, um, you know, just see, see what our, what our maintenance staff's understanding of that likelihood to occur is. Anyway, it, it's a broad question.
Yes, um, the Southwest Plaza does have their own generator on site that powers our pump stations. And, um, they're, they're responsible for maintaining their own generator, um, and, and, and making sure it, it works properly. I, it has, I, I know we've had power outages in the past where the generator has turned on. So we, we've had experience, success with it's turned on. Um, uh, and, and they've reassured us, um, we've, we've had this issue with them years back and they reassured us that, um, their generator is, is maintained and it will provide us, um, um, backup power. Now, we, we could request, I, I guess we could request some, uh, uh, maintenance records from them. We could do that. Sure.
Well, maybe, I, just a thought, um, you know, just, just so that we have comfort that it does work.
Yes.
I don't know what that is.
Well, be, being that it worked last time the power off, that gives me some comfort that it does work. So, but, but doesn't mean in the future will it work again? That's a good question. But it did work last time the power went off. That's, that's, that does give us some comfort.
I'm, I'm, I'm sure Southwest Plaza tried, would, would stay on top of that because it's such an important.
Right, exactly.
The, the, the other, the other question is, is do we have a, um, I, I know that five, four or five years ago, there was a, um, a regional board request for storm drain information. Um, storm drain information from all of the entities, um, you know, around Orange County. So it was a county request and the, and the goal was to make that available to the various jurisdictions that if there was a sanitary sewer overflow, that, that agency like ours would know where that sewage might go. Do we have a storm drain map from the city?
We do, but, um, it's not, we, it's hard to read. They're very old. And we've requested some new maps, but it's kind of fell on deaf ears over there. So we, we use what we've got, what they've given us, and we believe they need to be updated. Where that is on their prior list, I don't know, but we do have the maps. They're just, uh, we wish they were just a bit better, more, a little more accurate, but better condition.
Well, uh, you might check the MS four regulations or whatever, whatever the Santa Ana region promulgated and delegated the county to be responsible for collecting all that stuff.
Okay.
I, you know, and it's indirectly tied to, uh, well, more directly tied to if there's a sanitary sewer overflow, where would the agency think it might go?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how, how strong the, the Santa Ana Regional Board is on that regulation, but I'm not even sure it's called the MS four regulation, but I think it is.
I think you're right. And we just recently came across information that the Monsanto case is, uh, doing a class settlement and Costa Mesa is getting a significant amount of money out of that for their, uh, MS four permit. So, um, that might be a good incentive for them to, uh, update their drain, their storm drain plan.
Oh, yeah, okay.
With that money.
Yeah.
Who do we talk to at the city to make sure that gets done, Scott?
Um, I'd call Rajah, their home services director.
Right. Let him be aware that we're concerned about it and we'd like it updated.
Definitely.
I, I, I've talked to Rajah about it and he, he said they just did a, they just did a, uh, storm drain master plan. We probably should get ahold of that and there might, there might be some information in that that would be valuable to us.
Yeah, sure. Well, it's most important is, is if we had the maps because then we can, we can, once it goes in a storm drain, we can follow it where, where it leads. And that's the most important part. But I think that that's what we need to focus on really is trying to get more accurate maps from them. So, um, maybe the county has them too. So I can, I can reach out to the county.
Well, the county, the county asked, asked Costa Mesa for them and what they gave them, or if they gave them anything.
The part, what they gave is probably the same stuff they gave us then.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, just a question. And I think we need, we need that information.
Definitely.
That's all.
I had a question. On, uh, A four, they said something, uh, you said something about unable to install the permanent generators. Uh, is there any kind of policy or law that we, if we have to have a generator right by, uh, a pump station? Um, is that because this one place, he doesn't even respond to us to say he can or cannot have this generator at the pump station?
No, there's no, there's no, um, re- regulations that says you have to have a generator on site. You just need to make, you just need to make sure you have secondary power for your, for your pump stations. And that could be mobile generators, which we have. Um, the reason why we put, we want to put permanent generators on there is, is again, um, time is at essence. When you have power outages, you need to get your mobile generator out there. You need the staffing, um, all that stuff and that, you know, that, that risk, that increases your risk of a sewer overflow. If you have a, if you have a permanent generator on site or a permanent bypass pu- pump on site, you don't have to worry about that. It just kicks in and you're not, you don't have to use additional resources. Um, because the, I mean, you could go in a domain, um, that is a possibility, but that, that takes a long legal challenge.
Yeah, and money.
Yeah, you want to go through. So there, there really is only really two more viable spots that we could probably put generators on. And as we said, in the, in the, in the plan, that's at Geisler and at the Corp yard. Uh, other, other locations like Santa Ana, um, Harbor, um, Iowa, um, there's just not enough land or space to put, put, uh, generators on near the stations.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, how often do we check our generator over on Irvine Avenue?
We check it every day. Uh, we run it once a month to make sure it, it's, it's running properly.
Wow, good.
Do we maintain that? I mean, it's our job to maintain it, right?
Uh, we, we have a contractor that, that goes out and maintains it. So we have a, um, um, regular PM schedule that, uh, contractor goes out and maintains it. We'll, we'll, we'll run it ourselves. We'll turn it on monthly, make sure it, it runs. We do that on a monthly basis, but we'll have a contractor come out there on a, on a PM schedule to maintain it, like change the oil and stuff like that.
Okay, good. I didn't know that.
Scott, is that YC Power?
Yes, YC Power, yes.
Uh, do the board members have any other questions?
Did you get all your questions answered, Bob?
Yes, yes. Um, no, I, I, it, it's, it's a, it's a fun document for me to read. It's a little long.
I have. I have something here. On, um, the, uh, equipment and the replacement and, you know, what we have, do we automatically budget every year so much knowing that no matter what, that we might need certain things uh, for replacement parts and the inventory on hand at the yard?
Yes, we, we do have a, a, an inventory, um, uh, on hand and, uh, we do budget properly for, for replacements. Sometimes, um, we do have, um, unforeseen, um, repairs. And we do have, um, most of the times, not all the time, but most of the time we will have the money in the budget, uh, to, to handle that un- unanticipated repairs. But, and then we also keep in stock at the yard, uh, an inventory for, um, uh, replacement parts.
Thank you. Okay, that's good.
Hey, Bob, it's Mike.
Yeah.
Um, I would like to hear from Mike Benish, our engineer, if there's anything that, any comments or anything that he has to say on the plan and, again, if he has any comments.
Well. I don't have any comments on the plan. I think it's pretty well written and covers just about everything it should.
Great, thanks, Mike.
Now, any, any other directors' comments, staff comments, or? Uh, are we done? I think we're done with this item then.
Yes, yes, Mr. Vice President, I guess we're on closed session now.
Um, yeah, okay. So, so we, we'll, we'll adjourn the, uh, regular, or the special meeting to the closed session. And who, who should be in that closed session, Scott? The directors?
Directors, uh, Alan and myself.
Okay, and, and Mike?
Um.
What, I think, I think Alan had.
Yeah.
A question about whether Mike should be in the meeting or not.
It's, it's fine. Yeah, sure, it's fine.
And I think Alan adjusted the, um, the attendance so that he could be in the meeting, but.
Okay, I've added him and I am moving you all to closed session.
Thanks, Alan.
To discuss the litigation.
Yes.
Riverwatch versus Costa Mesa Sanitary District.
Okay, the closed session room is open. You may join it now. You may join it now.